But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the regular Goldendale City Council meeting for December 7th, 2020. Larry, you have that number for the correct number for that?
Phil does.
We understand that the the number to call in is not correct. It's on the webpage, but...
The ID number is different. The call-in number is the same.
It's the it's the ID number that is different. It'll cause you not to be able to get in.
The ID number is 842-3733-1313.
Very good.
Did you get that?
Okay. Thanks, Phil. Phil Longevet has been an absolute lifesaver today with his technical knowledge on Zoom and call-ins. We appreciate it very much. Connie, would you do the roll?
Oh.
Although I think you probably can see everybody. That might work too.
Well, not everybody has a picture. I see Julie. Kevin's there somewhere. Where'd you go?
I'm here.
Okay. Lauren's there. Shannon's there. Andy, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
I know Phil's here and my one's here.
Do we have a full council?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you, Connie. We have a full council for this evening and the next item on the agenda is public hearing for the 2021 budget. We'll open that hearing now for comments or discussion or questions. The public hearing is open. Hearing no comments or questions will go ahead and close the public hearing. It'll also be discussed under ordinances as well, so we'll have another chance to talk about it. The next item is the agenda and consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept those?
Julie, I'll make the motion.
We have a second.
This is Shannon. I'll second it.
Thanks, Shannon. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda for this session. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any against or asking for a change? If none, we'll go on to the next item that we have business on are the department reports and we'll turn our first report over to Chief Jay Huntsiker for the Goldendale Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor. On the November 11th, or let me start with one officer, Officer Stelges has got two big compliments, one from a citizen and one from the Washington State Patrol. On November 11th, he assisted the Washington State Patrol on locating businesses that had surveillance cameras that will cover Broadway, basically, and they're trying to find a commercial vehicle on an incident they were investigating. One of the businesses had footage that Officer Stelges was able to work with them and help them out to get stuff downloaded for the Washington State Patrol to assist in their agency. And the state patrol sergeant Nate Hovenhoff sent us an email saying that Officer Stelges went above and beyond what was requested of him, so they were really appreciative of that. And then on 12/5, Officer Stelges was on duty and responded to a motor vehicle accident. And I had one of the persons involved in that accident give me a call this morning, and she said that this MVA that she was involved in was her first interaction with the Goldendale Police Department, and it was absolutely fantastic as far as, you know, the officer was very professional, courteous, went beyond even offered to change a flat tire that was on her vehicle. And she was just very appreciative and thought that just the world of Officer Stelges and the department, so those were really good. Officer Kelsey Rooks, over the weekend she got recertified for a defensive tactics instructor, so that helps keeps the liability down for the city.
Good.
And only other thing I have is we have civil service testing coming up on the 12th, which is a Saturday, and hopefully we can get liable candidates.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The next department's report will be Noah Hall for the Goldendale Fire Department. Noah, are you on the line?
I'm here, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, so just a couple things. So here to date, the fire department has responded to 203 calls for service. Roughly, it's probably about a 50/50 between a fire call and a medical call. I don't have those numbers in front of me. Last year, the fire department, or excuse me, at the beginning of 2020, we started the fire department maybe around 29 to the 30 firefighters. We have lost several of those firefighters. We're down to 22. So some of these calls are getting a little difficult to to get with the low numbers. I think COVID's got something to play with that. But I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. We are still running strong. Our we're still getting trucks out and people taken care of. Also, so the canned food drive put on by the J.C.'s and Rural 7 and the Goldendale Fire Department are involved will be this Sunday, the 13th, at 1:00 p.m. So the fire trucks will be driving around, lights and sirens on, and bring your canned foods up. I think that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Noah, very much. Appreciate it. I understand also that Public Works is on the line. Doug, are you there?
He's there. I see his number.
I'm here.
If you have a report, please go ahead.
I'm like along cruising out along. We're trying to get some of the flash and the water shit burned before the snow shuts us out of there. And other than that, we're just doing normal making the bad moves for the time of the year.
That's good. Thank you very much, Doug. Appreciate all that Public Works does for this city. We'll now go to... Did you have something else?
Nope, I'm good. I just said yep.
Okay, yep, thank you. We'll now go to council business. The first item is the amended amendment to the contract for janitorial services. And I'll present that. Re-contract for cleaning of city offices throughout the city, and that that contract is will be renewed on December, on January 1st. It expires on December 31st. Now, we're moving this, so it is all booked for 2021 from January 1st to December 31st, 2021. The compensation rate of $5,000 per month. And Chief Huntsiker supports the proposed contract. Appreciate that. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the amended agreement for janitorial services between the city of Goldendale and Crystal Janitorial.
We have a second?
Julie, a second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute the amended agreement for janitorial services between the city of Goldendale and Crystal's janitorial services. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, or did I miss any questions?
Just a quick clarification. The amount of money is not 5,000. It's actually $1,200 per month.
Yeah, I think I gave...
Gave the wrong one.
Yeah, I was I was a document ahead. The next item, our police chief will present the professional services contract for the prosecuting attorney. Jay?
Gwendolyn Grundy has agreed to continue providing prosecuting attorney services for the city. The agreement, if approved, will take effect the first day of January of 2021 and expire midnight, December 31st of 2021. I am in full support of this. Gwendolyn is great to work with. She's very good at what she does, and the police department is very pleased with just her services. And we can call her anytime if we have a question that we need to get the prosecutor on board on. So I would recommend that this be set into motion.
Do we have questions or comments? And if not, do we have a motion to act on this particular item?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a personal services contract with Gwendolyn Grundy in the amount of $5,000 per month for the period from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
21, yes. Are there questions or comments before we vote?
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I'd heard one. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll go ahead and second.
That's Phil.
Is that Phil? It's been moved and seconded by the city council to authorize the mayor to execute a personal services contract with Gwendolyn Grundy in the amount of $5,000 per month for the period from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If not, the motion passes. The next item is the Clickedat County Public Works reimbursable agreement, and our chief of police will also present that agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. It was coming to my attention when we were discussing, I was discussing things with Larry King, or Larry King, excuse me, Jeff King, and if the city does not have its own storage for backup emergency fuel in case we get into a situation. Okay, so from time to time, the city may require services from the Clickedat County Public Works Department, who does have storage fuel that can be used in emergency situation. If the services are requested, the reimbursable service agreement will apply, which is a standard five-year agreement that the county public works have. And it is something I feel very strongly that we do need because we, if something happened and the borders were shut down and we lost power and the pumps that we normally get our fuel out don't work, this would be the place to go to to get fuel for city vehicles because they have the backup generators to run the system. So I am strongly in agreement to have this proceeded further for the city to go into the agreement with Clickedat County Public Works.
Thank you, Chief. Are there questions or comments from the council?
This is Lauren. I'm curious to know if there's other opportunities that managers at Public Works could also benefit from some of the equipment, services, materials that the county might offer.
I am unaware, or I don't have that kind of information. I don't know. This is an agreement strictly for the fuel.
Are you talking about...
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
This is Lauren. I'll make that motion to approve this contract.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
It's Kevin. I'll second.
Thank you, Kevin. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute the reimbursable agreement with the Clickedat County Public Works Department. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda and the motion passes. This item is the Transportation Improvement Board, and Larry Bellamy will give us the details on that.
As you all know, which we've been able to announce, the city was successful in being awarded a Transportation Improvement Board grant in the amount of $616,000, $659, $569 to upgrade streets, sidewalks, utilities on Buyer Street. So we have received that grant, and now we need to authorize the mayor to to execute that grant agreement, TIB, and then we will begin starting on our efforts to obtain design services for this project, which will include the upgrade or the reconstruction of the water line first before we do the reconstruction on the road. And just so everybody knows, the grant is for the road portion only, the road, the streets, or the road, the sidewalks, and the storm drainage. The replacement of the water line will be on the city's dime. But we're very grateful for the grant, so we want to go ahead and make this a complete project. The sewer line has recently been, has already recently been replaced. I think it was about, might be up to five years ago, three, four, five, three, four, five years ago, something like that. And so that utility is up to date as well. So this particular resolution is to authorize the mayor to enter into that grant agreement, and we recommend the council authorize him to do that.
Do we have questions?
This is Lauren. I move to approve Resolution Number 714, authorizing the city of Goldendale to enter the Transportation Improvement Board grant agreement for street sidewalk and utility improvements on Buyer Street.
Thank you, Lauren. Do we have a second?
Shannon, I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 714, authorizing the city of Goldendale to enter into a Transportation Improvement Board grant agreement for street sidewalk and utility improvements on Buyer Street. All in favor, please say aye.
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 This is Kevin. I have to abstain from this vote.
Okay. Do we have any others abstaining or against this proposal? If not, we'll call for your vote and add the note on Kevin's abstaining.
This is Lauren. I have a quick question on that project.
Sure.
And that is whether our current contract with Pioneer Survey will allow us to expedite that work and get it done more quickly and with reduced administrative costs to the city by having Pioneer do it. I'm not sure what our arrangements are, what the grant requirements are for bidding versus having our on-call engineering services take care of that project.
This is Larry. We, I have certainly agree with your your assessment, and actually, I believe the TIB requires that there be a request for qualification statements be sent in to the city on this particular project. However, in the past, we have used Pioneer, and they are well qualified to do the work. And it, the only thing that you're suggesting that I'm not sure we can do is whether or not we can do that without going out for a request for qualification statements. But I will find out, make sure, and do the, do whatever process is most expedient.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Larry.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? We have voted to approve this resolution, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This is the ordinances and the first reading of the 2021 budget, and Larry Bellamy will deliver that.
Okay, so the budget committee met on the 23rd of November, I believe it was, and did did have some discussion. The discussion outline that we followed is about the fourth page in on this this particular item. It's in a spreadsheet format. And if you all take a look at that, this is what the budget committee considered as far as the, excuse me, as far as the capital L's are concerned. We've indicated that this is primarily an operation and maintenance budget carryover with the with the goal of trying to reduce as much capital L as we can. So after reviewing the the budget documents and the and the current state of the revenues and expenditures for the city, I have recommended that the general fund capital L spending goal be at about $100,000 for the general fund and about $300,000 for the water sewer fund. And then in public safety, which is a separate funding mechanism for capital L purchases for fire and police, that's for, that's the public safety line item. And then on the very bottom, we put a couple other items of consideration as well. So we developed a couple of priorities, and one of those priorities we've discussed earlier tonight, and that is that we want to make sure we have matching money available for the projects. So if you look on that spreadsheet under streets, the number one priority is a $70,000 match for the TIB award, which you, which we've been discussing. And then if you look down about the middle of the page, it has water sewer capital L, and that is for the water cost to replace the water main, which comes out to be $150,000. So those are related to the Buyer Street improvement. And then as far, if you stay on the same water sewer capital L spending, spending, capital L spending, the second item is the cost to replace the sewer line at the Clickedat County Services Building. So that's another project that we have going on, and they are going to be doing some improvement to the alleyway, repaving it, putting in some storm drainage system. And before they do all of that, we want to make sure our utilities underneath that alleyway in that particular section are not, are working properly. So we've determined that the sewer line needs to be replaced, and possibly the water line might need to be replaced as well. So we we believe the cost of that project in accordance with an engineer's estimate from Dustin Conroy at Pioneer Surveying and Engineering, that that one block area, partly due, the reason for the cost being so high at $150,000 is mostly due to the fact that the sewer line, which needs to be replaced, is about eight feet deep in there because a lot of the, several of the buildings that are serviced by the sewer line in the alley have basements. And so we have to go pretty deep for that that sewer line replacement. But it it has had many problems in the past, and it needs to be replaced before the county does their work. So we're hopeful that we can, again, try to save and use our money as efficiently as possible by using the local engineering office. And they've done this kind of work before, and certainly, as I've indicated before, are well qualified. So the the priorities for the the projects are are the ones I've just mentioned. And then the other priority in accordance with my discussions with the public works supervisor, Doug Frantum, the equipment purchases are at least, if not the highest priority, but at least the second highest priority in his in his mind, and that is the cost to replace the street sweeper, which is the number two item on the general fund capital L, and the cost to replace the back truck. And both of those would be financed over a 10-year period of time. And so the number you see in those two slots is the one, one-year estimated amount for paying that off within a 10-year period of time. And then we looked at the replacement of the kitchen in Econe Park as being a priority project because it's been, we recently tore down the old kitchen, and we did kind of indicate to the community that we would rebuild that kitchen back as quickly as we could. And we ran out of time this year, partly due to the COVID-19 and not being able to do the work that we had hoped we could do earlier in the year. But we do think that that's important, that we finish that that part out. And then as another project costs, we looked at proposing some, the airport fuel system contingency. I've been in discussions with the consultant and indicated that it might not be a bad idea to have some contingency there while we go out to bid for the airport fuel system. And he suggested that we have 20,000, that we at least at this time put aside $20,000 for the airport fuel system. And then I did mention that the water, in the water and sewer section, there were two trucks, a three-quarter ton truck and a half-ton truck that were needed to replace the vehicles at the wastewater treatment plant. And so those are priority priorities as well. The problem is that we're running into that spending goal, and we need to have some more discussions with the budget committee, and I'd like to refer this discussion item on the capital L purchases. I'd like to refer that back to the budget committee to meet next Monday at 6 o'clock, if they're willing to do that. And if there are any comments tonight that you'd like the budget committee to consider while they discuss these, the more finer points of these recommendations, then we're open for that discussion.
Does the council have comments or questions on this item?
May I, this is Phil. I do. I know with vehicles, it's a priority, especially in that department. And as we, as those items start to add up, I don't know if we want to create a priority of which ones get taken care of first. And I think in the past, somebody had mentioned putting everything on a rotating schedule so that we're not having so many vehicles being replaced. So if maybe get a couple of them taken care of and extend that, see if maybe the following year we can take care of the others instead of so many of them at once, because what will happen in five years, in three years, everything that needs to be replaced.
I think, Phil, that was kind of broken up, but I think what you were suggesting was that we need to have a schedule for, a replacement schedule for each of these pieces of equipment so that we don't have to run into a situation where we're trying to be reactive instead of proactive.
That is correct. I think the police department has something similar and where they maintain the vehicles, they rotate the vehicles. And I know that Public Works has kind of been left out for a while, so that we can get most on a rotating schedule and to the fire department and make sure that everybody, each one of our departments has been... each one of our departments is being taken care of in that big issue.
Okay, again, you were kind of broken up, but I think, I think your point is well We, we have started to do a reserve, a capital L reserve for the police and fire, and we're trying to work that out so that we don't spend all the, we don't have to spend the money for financing. However, the, the financing we're going to use is, is between 1% and 2%. So it's, it's not too bad to utilize the existing state program for purchases like this. It's probably a, a second best way to do. The first best way is probably go ahead and have the money on hand to purchase the equipment when it's needed. And so we need to do something similar to what we've done in the public safety reserve capital L program and apply that to the water sewer and streets budget as well. So.
Yeah, definitely. This year we just need to catch up, I guess. But I have a plan for the future.
Right. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil. Any other comments?
This is Lauren. I had a couple of items I wanted to suggest, and one is that we look at maybe some additional funds going towards weed control within the cities right away based on some past public comment and just some of my observations recently as we try and work on some of the public nuisance issues, or private property nuisance issues. I think we could invest in some invasive weed control, especially nap weed along a lot of our transportation corridors now at the airport and goat head at the, at the city baseball fields there. So I'm wondering if there might be an opportunity to take some of the funds from the legislative process and put towards weed control, given that the legislative process isn't going to involve travel to Olympia this year, as I understand it. And additionally, I suggest that we work with Marty Hudson at Klickatet County Noxious Weed to help figure out a plan to address some of those weed control issues.
Thank you. That's a very good suggestion.
And then I was also curious to know if, depending on the Budget Committee's position and the council chairs and other council members' position, if there would be an opportunity to maybe have a focus workshop on the budget with maybe a larger attendance by a city council, especially for someone who's newer folks that better understand the budget and some of the items in the, in, in the budget. I don't know if a workshop, but is that something we can put together in this next week or something? But I'd be interested in attending if others would like to have a broader discussion.
Okay, well, that's, that's actually up to the council if they would like to have a special session. We could, we could include the rest of the council if they wanted, if that's what the Budget Committee would want to, want to propose.
Very, this is Andy. I'm not sure how Shannon and Julie feel, but I, I don't think it would be a bad idea if we opened that up for the whole council, like next Monday night.
Shannon, I agree.
So we have, Julie, what did, do you have a comment on that?
Can't hear you, Julie. We can't hear you, Julie. Couldn't hear you, Julie.
Okay, can she shake her head one way or the other?
Wait, she's, she's, she unplugged something.
Okay, we're waiting on Julie to be plugged in again.
Are you there?
Let me try this microphone.
Okay, that's better.
I was gonna say, I agree with both Shannon and Andy, especially since I've been on the committee this year as well. So I have no problem if other council members want to join us.
Okay, why don't we set it up for 6 o'clock on next Monday, the 14th of December, at 6 o'clock, for a special session for a budget workshop for the entire council.
Next Monday, what's the date?
14.
At 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of that. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. I would suggest also, Phil Antevedos gave us a lot of good technical support this evening, and one of the things he said was we could use the projector and the equipment from EOC. If we have that for that meeting, it'll be easier for not only the committee but the council to discuss some difficult points there. So I think we can do that by Monday. Are there any more comments or questions on the first reading of the 2021 budget? If not, we'll call for a motion.
I'm moved to accept the ordinance for the 2021 budget for its first reading.
And a second.
This is Julie, I'll second.
Thank you, Julie. It's been moved and seconded to accept the ordinance for the 2021 budget for its first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Lauren, for your proposal as well. The next item is report of officers and city administrator. We'll begin with Larry Bellamy.
Actually, we've been talking about most of the things I've been working on. So budget has been pretty high priority in the last few weeks, as well as the TIB information and keeping track of the airport project. So that's, that's the extent of my report for tonight, and then, of course, next week we'll be working again on the budget in addition to what we've already discussed tonight.
Any questions or comments for Larry? If not, we'll go on to report of our city council members, and we'll begin with Mylan We might have to come back to Mylan. Next council member will be Phil Antevedos.
Good evening, once again. I don't have anything, just getting back to the group of thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate the help you gave us this evening, I'll tell you. Andy Hong.
Yes, Mayor, I actually don't have anything for tonight.
Okay. Shannon, Hampton?
I have nothing.
Lauren.
I just wanted to inquire about kind of the building permit process and kind of what, what we see for new applications. It sounded like there's been quite an uptick in new applications for.
Oops.
Hear me now?
Sorry. I accidentally muted you.
I got a message and I was muted. So anyhow, I'm just kind of curious to know about the status of any uptick in, in building permits and land, and also I'm curious to know if we can implement a process in our city administration to just send an email out to city councillors ahead of legal notices being posted and committee meetings that go on so that we're just aware of it, what's coming out in the paper and what kind of meetings are taking place so that when we're approached in the public, that we're prepared to answer those questions.
All right. We can easily do that.
And so part, and the other part of my question was just, has there been, has there been a swift increase in residential building permits? I know the county's seen a lot of land transactions and increase in construction, so what's our, what's our status with that kind of activity?
Okay, I know we keep track of that. We just have to pull the numbers and the information together and have it reported to the council.
So are we still going to offer incentives to large developers coming in, or are we going to stop doing that and slow progression?
We've actually been discussing several suggestions, and then we, but we haven't come to a conclusion on anything just yet. We have discussed with a couple of developers some ideas for incentives. We have to be sure that they meet muster with regard to state law. We have to be careful of the gift of public funds issue. There are some limited things that we might be able to do, which we're investigating. It's just going to take a little bit of time to pull all those together and see what we can, Justin and I have been working on it, and we just need to pull it all together and provide you a summary of what we determined is available to developers in our community.
Thank you.
This is, this is Lauren. Larry, I got involved with city council about a year ago on a development item, and there were some codes that didn't quite match versus the comprehensive plan. And I don't know, you know, what the outcome on that should be, that, that would, you know, leave that to the body of council, but I wonder if that's something that we could readdress and wrap up quickly so we don't have any contentious issues with the vagaries between the comprehensive plan and the, and the city code as we start looking at these developments. And again, like I said, I obviously had a position on that, but the final decision there would be the legislative body of the whole city council. I think it might be just good proactive work to get that resolved as soon as we can.
Okay, I made a note, and hopefully we can wrap all these things around one item and try to address them all at once if we can, like you say, in an efficient yet public hearing and participation from the public as best we can.
Okay. Then last comment I have is I did receive some feedback not too long ago about the opinion of the city's crosswalks and just appreciation for making those more visible and that kind of work that Public Works does. So I just wanted to pass that on to city staff and Public Works that their, their work is appreciated out there in the community.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other items? If not, I'm going to call on Mylan Walling. He's come by and he can make his comment, and I'll call on Julie and Kevin after that. Mylan.
Can you hear me? Okay, well, I'll just sneak up there. I have no comments.
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mylan didn't have any further comments. Julie?
Can't hear you.
How about now?
There you go.
Perfect. You would think I would have a hang of this with all the meetings we do on Zoom. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank Public Works for getting the candy canes put up. They look great. It's nice to have some decoration when you're driving down the street.
No.
So appreciate that. I would suggest to the fire department to maybe put out on social media about the food drive this weekend. I participated the last couple of years, and I can't say that I've seen anything for it this year. So maybe we can get something out on Everything Goldendale and your Facebook page, announcing that, that would probably be real helpful. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Julie, one point of clarification. We appreciate your comment about the city Public Works putting up the candy canes, but actually they're put, put into place by the Klickatet County PUD.
Oh.
They are the ones that have the, the trucks with the, with the lifts on them and stuff like that that can do all that work for us. So they.
Oh, I did know.
I think, I'm pretty sure they volunteer their time, but I'm.
I'm not sure. They do? Cool.
At least that's our understanding, so.
Great. No, I appreciate you telling me that. I didn't realize that. But yeah, I, they deserve credit because they look great, and it's a nice cheerful to see them when you're driving down the street.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The next.
Mayor, Noah, can I, can I say something on the candy food drive?
Sure.
It is, I think Phil put it on our Facebook page, and the JCs, I know that's not their name, I think it's Junior Chamber, I'm not 100%, but they have it out on their website, and I believe I see it on Everything Goldendale. So I just wanted to say that.
So it's pretty well covered. That's good.
Okay, yeah, thanks. No, I appreciate that. I, like I said, I'm usually pretty Facebook savvy and hadn't seen anything, so I will make sure I can participate.
Next council member will be Kevin.
Well, it's been three weeks since our last meeting. I was just wondering if we have any update with Mr. Novak's issue?
Yes, we do, Kevin, and I believe, at least I thought he was. Did he get paid?
It should be. Is it or it's not in there? Craig? Starts with a C. It's not in there?
Well, I know he sent in all the paperwork, and I thought we had the payment ready for him this week. We'll finalize that, but we sure, sure set, set things in motion and the payment, if it wasn't made this time, it will be made at the next council.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure and just do a follow-up. Thank you so much, Larry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. On the mayor's remarks, more than anything, I want to point out the excellent cooperation that the city gets from Klickatet County, both Public Works and other aspects, as well as from the PUD. This is a city that wouldn't necessarily be able to pay for all those things. So cooperation and working together, I think, saves money and time and effort on both sides. But the county and PUD are excellent partners for the city, and we appreciate it very, very much. We'll go on now to public comments, and anyone that wants to call in, the number is on the agenda, and you have three minutes if you give your name and your address. Do we have anybody from public comments? I don't believe we do.
Yes.
Oh, we do?
I think so.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hi, council. This is Theon Wheeler.
Hi, Theon.
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. So, well, I just wanted to say thank you as well for all the wonderful decorations, and thanks to the Kiwanis for putting up the flags for today. I mean, it's a very auspicious day. Many, many years ago, we had a rough experience, and we're having a pretty darn one, interesting one this year, but not nearly that bad, right? So I guess what I was calling to ask about was, is the bid for janitorials still open? Or did you close out already? I, I never saw it open to public bid.
We did, about a year ago, we did, and we adopted that for its, we adopt, we decided to go with that particular contract, and then tonight we, we extended it.
We just extended it, yeah.
I see. Oh, I didn't, I thought it was out for public bid. I know last year you guys had contacted me about it in the middle of the year.
Right.
And then I put in a bid then, but I wasn't, I wasn't aware of the, the year, you know, yearly. Okay, I understand.
Okay, thanks.
So that just doesn't go out to public each year?
No, we don't send it out to public each year. We, when we need a change, then we'll go out again for, for quotes and personal service contact information, see if there's somebody else that would provide us the same work at a recent, at a decent cost.
Okay, well, you still have all my information then.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
All right, so if you need me. And the other thing was, yes, I also noticed the, the sidewalks or the crosswalks in town. You guys have all been doing such good work for the community here in Goldendale, and I appreciate it. It's nice to see that we're still going to have a white Christmas possibly, so I hope everybody's safe out there, and I hope that, yeah, we, we can make sure our roads are safe. You guys all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for coming.
everybody's safe out there and I hope that, yeah, we can make sure our roads are safe. You guys all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, very kind. Anyone else on the line for public comment?
Mayor, this is Roger Nichols. I just want to thank you so much for getting on Zoom so we could see your friendly faces again.
Well, we have a glitch at this end. We can't see you, but we love to at least hear everybody.
I can see you.
Connie can see you.
I can see you all.
Next time, we're going to be all looking at you. Thanks, Roger. You don't see any other indication of public comment? Okay. We need a motion to adjourn city council tonight. Do we have a motion?
This is Julie, I'll make that motion.
Can, second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn city council for December 20th, that's December 7th, 2021. Our next session will be December 21st. And I appreciate how everyone worked together for a very productive city council. Thank you so much, and good night.
Good night.
Good night.